Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, June 25th at 7:30 PM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky is absent, Mr. Winarski. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, as at the start of every meeting, we ask that we remember those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. We ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time that we were in these chambers. And particularly, we ask for those of us here and listening to remember the family of my mentor of 25 years and friend and partner, I guess Pastor Robert Gaines, who passed away a couple of weeks ago since we were in our last meeting. So remember his family and remember his work in this community that it continues on. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of June 4th, 2014, and bills for payment on June 27th, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Hey, are there any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Hearing none. Citizens to be heard, we have Christopher, I believe is Ackerman, and following him is Mr. Randy Barnes. As you approach the mic, let me remind us that we have a hearing, a CRIS hearing, public hearing, at 8:00 PM. So wherever we are on the agenda, we will halt at that point and open it up for CRIS discussion and information. If you approach the mic prior to that and your concern is about the CRIS, we ask you to hold that until the public hearing is open at 8 o'clock. Is Mr. Christopher Ackerman present? Hearing none, he's not here, Mr. Randy Barnes.
Thank you, Council President, Council Administration, guests, those with us electronically. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. I looked on the agenda tonight and under new business, there's a lot of resolutions. And obviously, they're all necessary. A lot of them have to do with spending money. Others had to do with getting money so we can spend it. Probably the most significant one under G is number one, and I think that's a testament to the American way, when you have a person that works in a job and does well and climbs a ladder. And tonight, let me congratulate Ms. Roby, unofficially still, I'll be the last to congratulate you unofficially. But among those resolutions, I hope that in the near future, we see a resolution that may bring some revenue into the city. First, before I talk about that, on Friday, May 30th, PennDOT Deputy Secretary Toby Favre was in Erie, and he was hosted by several people, including Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership. And he talked about the importance of intermodals and just gave some general thoughts on intermodals. And one of the things he said was, he stressed that all of these good things can happen, but he stressed however, quote, "that the public has to be on board if a rail terminal succeeds." And then we had another quote from a community member, Jake Roush, the Chamber's Vice President of Economic Development. And Mr. Roush said, "For a project like that to work, it has to be collaborative effort and has to have strong community support," Roush said. "It's not a quick process, but a necessary process." So with the strong community support, I can picture the seven of you elected council people writing Resolution One or all of you working on it, or I'll even write it if you want me to, and you can correct what you want to, and passing this resolution, asking that our own community development group within the city work with the local lead developers and private developers, along with state representatives, Harkins and Labrizio. As strong as the seven of you are, I think those two individuals can do a lot for us in Harrisburg, but I think they need to see that you have, they have your support, that you want to see an intermodal constructed, and if it can be constructed in Erie, that's a great thing to bring in some revenue. And I think it's important that the taxpayers, the people that vote for you, that see that the City Council can do something that maybe stimulate some growth. And we do appreciate all the fine work you did on collecting delinquent garbage fees, and we appreciate that a lot, but that really doesn't add much to the bottom line, it's already there, it just hasn't been accounted for, collected. So with that said, I urge President Witherspoon and the other six members of council to work together and write a reasonable resolution showing that the taxpayers that you, they have, the intermodal would have your support in the city for development, and that the state representatives would know that, along with the PennDOT. Mr. Pettit was at this same meeting that the Department Transportation Deputy Secretary was at. So I think those are the people that you need to work with. But not to bring this down on the down note, but let me remind you, there's only six more months of shopping days before Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, Council. My name's Dominic Savoye. I'm a resident of 952 East 32nd Street. June 7th this year, I was on my way home from the peninsula on my morning bike ride. At the intersection of 32nd and Reed, there's a sinkhole. I called that in to, I didn't think it warranted a 911 call, so I called the non-emergency police number. I was transferred over to the Streets Department, I notified them of the sinkhole. I waited an hour and 25 minutes for somebody to show up. I didn't have the conscience to leave that intersection to jeopardize somebody else's safety, a kid walking, riding their bike, falling in the hole, major catastrophe. And I didn't have the conscience to leave to possibly put the city in a financial burden of somebody getting injured. It's now the 24th or 25th of June, still no action. So they came by an hour and 20 minutes later and put a barricade around it, and that's the last action that's been put down on that. I'm concerned because I live in the neighborhood, number one. I have pictures, if any council member would like to see it, I'd love to show you.
I would like to see those, please.
It's this deep, sir. I crawled in the hole, and I'm hanging onto the street, and my feet aren't touching the bottom. Now, we've had two pretty decent rain events lately, I'm concerned of more washout underneath. The section of road that needs to be fixed, in my opinion, is quite substantial. The other side, on the east side of 32nd and Reed, appears to be the same thing happening. Farther west, heading towards Ash, one of the manhole covers is so out of whack, you have to drive around it, or you're going to go for a ride if you hit it. It's getting terrible. And I understand the city workers, Streets Department, they're doing the best they can with what they have available to them. But in my eyes and in my opinion, I think that's some sort of an emergency that needs to be acted on in an appropriate time fashion to further reduce the cost to the city of somebody getting injured, or an elderly person driving through there, and the other portion of the street caves in, and they go for a ride. That's my concern tonight. I would love to speak to anybody afterwards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that report. Is the administration aware of that?
The first that I'm aware of it, Mr. President, but I will certainly look into it. I'm sure that Public Works have been there, and the Streets Department have been there. I'm sure they're aware of it. I'll find out.
Okay. Thank you. We will follow up on that. Thank you. Yes.
Sir.
Name and address.
Chris Maris, 1530 West 24th Street, Erie, PA. Hey, give me a chance, Merle, please. But I'm just here this evening, and of course, I want to acknowledge the counselor and the administration and the city comptroller as well. Here on behalf of, well, first, I'd like to just say a few words in thanking Mr. Jim Clem, and even though he's not here this evening, and his tremendous stature that he had, and the late Gloria Creschon, and Marina Wolf, they did a terrific job. Jim is an icon, and we're going to miss him, and certainly, when I had the honor of being Council President on two occasions, he made my job much, much easier. And he's an athlete that we're all going to miss. But I'm sure that Rose Roby stepping up will do a great job, and I wish you all the well, Rose. I know that you're a hard worker, you're intelligent, personable, and you're going to bring that dedication to the job, the same dedication that Jim Clem brought for around 40 years. So I wish you all the best, and you're going to do a terrific job, and I just wanted to stop down this evening for a few words, and I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Rose, hearing none, continue with the agenda, please.
All right, ordinance for final passage. Council File Number 15874, official file ordinance number 202014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from a Erie County Greenway Program grant, and providing for the expenditure thereof for McClellan Park By Mr. Witherspoon and sponsors seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Bill Number 15874, and now known as official file ordinance number 2014, is finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Council File Number 15875, official ordinance number 21 of 2014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,849,966 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, $298,05224 reprogram funds from previous community development block grant years, and $10,000 program income for a total of $3,158,1824 for the following 2014 projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Herancunso, that file ordinance, Bill Number 15875, and now known as official file ordinance 212014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Council File 15876, official file ordinance number 222014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $658,817 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the following home projects. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Herancunso, that file ordinance, Bill Number 15876, and now known as official file ordinance 222014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Council File Number 15877, official file ordinance 232014, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $234,592 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the following emergency solution grant projects. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Herancunso, that Council File Ordinance, Bill 15877, now known as official file ordinance 232014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council passes all the final reading ordinance by a 7 nays 0. Ordinance for first reading, Council File Number 15878, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $104,919 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2014 insurance fraud prevention authority. By Mr. Kowalski and seconded by Mr. Jones, that Council File Number 15878, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15878 by a 7 nays 0. Now we have new business.
Mr. President.
Point of order, just for the records, should we have six? Yay six?
Yeah, six.
Bob's not here?
Oh, it is six.
Oh, pardon me. I forgot we have an absent person.
Make sure we change the records to reflect six.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Been properly moved, the balance? Your second.
My second.
Your second.
Separation.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
If we could separate number one, under new business.
Okay.
I think it's important enough to separate.
Absolutely.
Any other separations? Hearing none, Rose.
Okay, moving to the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mrs. Herancunso, that Rose Roby is hereby appointed City Clerk of the city of Erie effective July 14th.
Can she say her own name?
Oops.
Mr. President, would you make a comment now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'd just like to say that I'm very excited to have the opportunity to make this official appointment of Rose to the City Clerk's position. She's been helping us out for the last, I don't know, two years now, and it seems like, hasn't been that long?
Four.
Four! See, see how I can count? And she's really, since she started in our office for the first time, she immediately jumped right in, tried to learn as much as she could, helped us out with anything we asked, took a ton of initiative in managing the changes that have gone through our office in the last four years, have been a lot. And I'm just really pleased to be able to vote in favor of appointing Rose to this position, and I know that she'll continue to carry out the job professionally, and just such a wonderful person, and we're lucky to have her. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can I make a comment? I'm asking permission.
All right, just a sec.
All right, thank you. Sometimes when we make decisions, in my time on this council, we've had to make some very difficult decisions. And then there's some very simple decisions that we have the liberty and the opportunity to make. And for me, this is one of those simple ones, for many reasons. Not to, you know, to be overly mushy or soft about it, but it was, it's a, this is not an easy group of people to work with at times, believe it or not. And you're gracious. But she, Rose, and, and not just Rose, I mean, there've been multiple people in the last couple of years. Lori's just, she keeps us in line, too. I mean, don't get me wrong, but, you know, in relation to Rose, has really taken a leadership role in the office. And so, you know, sometimes, again, it's good to be able to make some easy decisions. And some people have, they make it easy because of the work that they've done to put themselves in a position. And were there other people that probably could do the job? Absolutely. I mean, everybody, everyone's going to have a learning curve, you know, and all of that. But I think that you positioned yourself in a very great place, and you've done the job very effectively. And that's a huge, huge thing for us. And the reason I even wanted to make a comment besides, I always tell Rose how much I love her and all that good stuff, and thank you, and thank you, all that. But I think it's important that we, we don't have any other positions that we can just appoint, you know, to staff. And this is a valuable position for us, so, like, this is a big deal. And so, don't want people to take this lightly, this is all we get, you know, and everything else is kind of systematically out of our hands to a certain extent. But for us to kind of, probably, I don't know, I'd imagine it'd be a six to, and a bobber here, it'd be a seven oh vote today. It means a lot. And so, again, not to make this much longer than it should be, it probably is longer than it should have been, but thank you for what you've done, but now the real work, because now you're official. You can't pass, but I'll call Jim. Nah, we're not doing that. We're not calling Jim. And so, again, thank you, and we look forward to, I look forward to working my next three years with you in this office. So thanks a lot, Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Sure.
Rosie, you can definitely call Jim.
And I will.
Naturally, we'll miss his years of service here at the city and his knowledge and input in what he made our council be what it is today. There's no doubt in my mind that Rose will fulfill those shoes and continue with the knowledge and the assistance that Jim has provided to us in the years that I've been here, as long as the council's before me. But Rose, welcome, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you. I'm welcome.
Mr. President, say a few words?
Let him go first, he's all right. Okay.
Yeah. I've only been here for about two and a half years, but of course, I've gotten to know Rose pretty well. And I think, given some of the subjects we talk about, some of the work that we do, it's very difficult work, it's not something anyone can just walk in and do it. So, yeah, I appreciate the hard work that goes into this, and I often give some phone calls, and it's like, please do this, please do this, help me out here, help me out here. And it's always positive, very, very, some excellent work that I believe Rose has done here. And definitely some big shoes to fill, but I think Rose is going to do a great job, and thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And I'd like to welcome Rose also. One thing, when I was gone for about a week, we had a couple of things to get done, and you learn to lean on people a lot, and Rose and Lori made sure that the two items I had to get taken care of were taken care of. I've been pretty lucky here at City Hall, I had a great deputy for 12 years, Lucy Braebender, and I'm sure Rose is going to live up to the expectations of the great Jim Clem. And Rosie, you're still welcome at the old man's club. You can take Jim Clem's position.
Thanks.
Welcome to the family, and thank you for a great job.
All I have to say, Rose, is ditto.
Thank you, Mel.
See, do you see, guys? Ditto means the same as everything. All right. Let's take a short break on...
We got to vote.
We got to vote on the bill?
We have to vote on this item.
Let's go ahead with the vote.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You said all that, you might change your mind now. We got to vote.
Make it official, sir.
Make it official.
All right, voting on the resolution, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Herancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Ashes.
And... And now we have our public hearing.
Want to take a...
She's ready.
She's ready?
I'm ready, thank you.
A break. Hey, we have, Rose?
This is a resolution authorizing and directing the clerk to advertise for a public hearing on Wednesday, June 25th, 2014, at approximately 8:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 626 State Street, Municipal Building, Erie, PA, relative to the intent to create a municipal authority under the Municipal Authorities Act for the purpose of submitting a future application to the Commonwealth for city revitalization improvement zone designation and the subsequent administration of that program. This advertisement shall be published at least one time in the legal periodical of the county, and at least one time in the newspaper published, and in general circulation in Sunch County, which has been done.
You're up.
Thank you very much, Council. As Ms. Roby just announced, we are here tonight to have a public hearing as the first step in the creation of a new authority. The authority will be created in order to facilitate a future application for CRIS designation, which we anticipate to be on the waterfront. This is the first step in the application process. As you're aware, we did submit an application previous. Harrisburg had made a determination that the way that it was submitted was not appropriate, so we are taking the appropriate steps at this point in time to remedy that, to prepare us for a future application. CRIS in general, we won't go through the specifics at the creation of the authority, but in general, CRIS is a very competitive process that allows for up to eight municipalities throughout the Commonwealth to designate an area up to 130 acres in which they can provide some relief and assistance for development. How that assistance comes in is through bonding, which is ultimately repaid by corporate net income tax, capital stock and franchise taxes, bank shares tax, business privilege tax, amusement tax, sales and use tax, alcohol sales, state taxes, personal income tax, local services tax, and earned income tax. So one of the beauties of this program is unlike TIF or LURDA, developers are allowed to use the taxes that I just mentioned, however, the city has still paid their full property taxes, which is certainly beneficial to us, as most of these taxes are state taxes, so the state is willing to defer those. When a development would occur within the CRIS area, the developer is responsible, they are allowed to use five CRIS dollars for every one private dollar. So that's a pretty good incentive for a developer to come in and revitalize the area that is designated. As far as the creation of an authority, it needs to be created under the Municipal Authorities Act, and that is, and today is the first process in that. Subsequent to the public hearing, once we have comments, at that point in time, the Solicitor's Office, working with my office, will review, will create and review articles of incorporation that would have to be filed with the state, and that would be the final step in the process, once you authorize that to occur.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I have a question. Ms. Sandberg, I know, just wait for me. You talked about the different taxes that would be used, the state taxes that would be deferred, right? But the role of the city in the CRIS or the authority, can you explain that for us? But the role of the city in the CRIS or the authority, can you explain that further about? We talked about it at study session, that the issue bonds, the CRIS issues.
The CRIS authority would issue a bond on behalf of a development. And then as that development occurs and begins to pay that long list of taxes, they pay full taxes to the state. The authority then on an annual basis calculates what those, that development sent to the state in relation to each of those taxes, and then that is reissued back to the authority to repay a bond.
Okay, so the business that is the developer does not receive a reduced sales tax bill or amusement tax bill? They just pay it and it's instead transferred into paying down their bond?
Correct. Instead of it going into the full state coffers, it is into a dedicated account, which is then on an annual basis pulled from the state to repay the bond issue.
Okay, and the city's role in all that if the developer does not generate enough tax revenue from these taxes to pay that bond back, and the city's role is what?
Within the first seven years, the state does allow for, and the legislation allows for ramp-up period, because obviously the project will be under construction, it will not be generating full taxes. The first seven years, should there not be enough funds available to make a bond payment, the state is willing to step in and make that payment on behalf of the authority. However, any of the payment that the state makes, as well as any future reduction in payment from what the development creates to what the bond is, is the responsibility of the city to repay.
In, in the seven years or in the life, the whole 30 years?
In the life of the bond.
In the seven years, it's just a timeframe, the state will kind of help us, help out?
Correct. The state will assist within that first seven years. However, at the end of the bond period, the authority needs to repay whatever the state has into it the first seven years. And should the authority not have the funds available to repay that, it would fall back upon the responsibility of the city.
But the taxes aren't included in that, right? The taxes don't have to be paid back, right?
No, no. No, the taxes that I listed above are whatever those taxes are. And should that, should there be an...
A shortfall?
A shortfall, then at that point, the authority and/or the city would need to cover that shortfall.
That's a portion that would, okay, roll over.
And the payment to, to the, to the, whatever it is, the, every annual payment that they might have to the bond is determined based on the bond amount and the financing? Not based on what they foresee being able to generate? Does that come in at all to the size of the bond?
The members of the CRIS authority should
Okay.
look at the development that is being proposed, the request from that developer on the amount of money that they're, they're looking for, for assistance from a bond from the CRIS authority. And hopefully, the authority members will be responsible in looking and taking a conservative estimate in what that development will create as far as those taxes are concerned, and only lend up to that amount.
So, that's the CRIS, the authority's obligation to evaluate that closely?
That is correct.
Is the developer at all considered like responsible for the lack of payment at all? I mean, if they don't generate enough taxes to pay back the bond issue, do they have an obligation to pay out of some other revenues, some other proceeds, something else, or not, not at all?
The way the current legislation is written, they are not responsible. We are, we are anticipating, we are anticipating that the legislation will be amended, and I'm not sure what those, all of those amendments may consist of. Obviously, we're hoping that one of the amendments will be opening up the application period prior to 2016. But there are other amendments that are being proposed in the House and the Senate currently, and I don't know what final form that will take.
There's no other guarantor other than the city?
That is correct, at this current time.
Okay.
Let me make sure I understand one thing. That is, if for some reason, the authority cannot repay, we, the city, are responsible for paying.
The, the way the current legislation is written, that is correct.
And we're being asked at some point to create or approve the authority?
That is correct. After the public hearing today, the, the next step will be a resolution or an ordinance before council authorizing the submission of the Articles of Incorporation to create that authority.
Now, when the, the authority is created, who determines the number on the authority? And who determines the appointments to the authority?
That is something that will work out as we get to your ordinance or resolution. Current discussion is the authority members would stay roughly at five, which is the minimum required by law. And after the study session that we had, I did bring back the conversation regarding who has the ability to appoint. And I know that that is something that we can continue that conversation. But I believe that council may have the ability to appoint a few members of the authority, and the administration would also.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Just a question in relation to the tax that would be used to pay back the bond. So, it's not 100% of what's generated. It's, what's the, how's that formula work, Mrs. Sandberg? It's like new taxes?
Correct. When you designate 130 acres, of that 130 acres of what we were looking at in our previous application, a good portion of that is underdeveloped. But the portion that is developed, they call that the baseline. So, you, when you, once you are approved, you set your baseline, which is all of those taxes I previously listed, what is currently going to the state and what is currently going to the city with an amusement tax or other taxes that come to the city. That is your baseline. From that point, any new development that occurs, you would then have anything from above the baseline until what was being submitted on that annual basis that is used to repay the authority.
So, with our, in our, I'm sorry, so in our scenario, having a majority of this particular acreage being underdeveloped, it's a good thing?
It is actually a benefit.
It's been, that's beneficial to the process. That was a concern that I had during the, the study session, that it's, we pay back based on the new taxes generated. But if we are underdeveloped in that area, then there should be a nice amount of tax revenue, significant amount of tax revenue generated.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandberg, when you get to, to get, break it down, Nick Scott's project is one of these, I think.
He, he was in the original application. That property was within the original.
Okay, and he's not paying probably a lot of tax now, but assuming he builds a lot of new buildings, that'll be quite profitable in a way, the taxes it'll generate. Is that, are we hurt in any way when we use public land, like port authority property? Is that going to hurt us in the taxes?
No, because this is, none of this is property tax. So, anything that is on any of those properties that has to pay an amusement tax or corporate net income tax or alcohol sales tax.
And EIT taxes, strictly state EIT tax, right?
I, I would have to look. I believe it is local.
Oh, it is local? Okay. So, before, as we go through this process, we will be kept appraised of the numbers, correct?
The number of, of the taxes being generated?
Yeah, what, you know, the projections and all that.
Well, I would assume as with any other municipal authority, you have updates, you know, continual updates from the authority directors as needed.
Can, I don't, I know you did recite them and read them off for us, but can we get a copy of those particular taxes? I don't know if you gave them to us before, you might have, in the study session?
I did, but we can, we can supply them.
I personally need one. Again, I apologize, I misplaced it. But as I, again, this is obviously going to have to get hashed out and we can't do it in this session. But depending on what the development is, it's going to be really, it's really going to depend on how much tax of those taxes is generated. So, if we're looking at like some mixed-use home, I mean, I don't know what the developments would be, but there may be some development projects that don't lend to those taxes.
All of them.
All of, or many of them. Because these are more entertainment-esque kind of taxes and work-related, not, like, so if we have, like sales taxes and those things, so if we were to have residences or something, that doesn't touch any of that.
Even when you look at the, the way the authorizing legislation is written, it doesn't use residential as an individual use as something that would benefit from this. So, really residential development in this, for, for this purpose is not something that's going to generate a lot of taxes that would then repay a bond issue. But again, it goes back to the authority looking at what is being proposed, what would be generated from that proposed development, and, and taking that conservative look at what the taxes would generate and what a responsible bond issue would be.
So, can you speak to the power that the, that the authority would have? So, like, the authority could say, no, don't think that's going to yield enough revenue via new taxes. We're not going to approve that. Like, do they have that, that autonomous authority, that kind of stamp of approval or not?
Obviously, this is, this is brand new. But the way that the legislation is written and all of our understanding from Harrisburg and others is yes. The municipal authority that is created has the responsibility to say yes or no to a bond issue and to set the amount of that bond issue and to be responsible for that bond issue. As does the sewer authority or what. This, this municipal authorities act falls, water authority, sewer authority falls under that also. So, it's the same rules and regulations as they would have.
So, it would, the only, I guess the major difference, which is significant, is that the city is actually responsible if they do come up short payment-wise. But as far as structure and a, a power and authority that they have, it's similar or the same as the other municipal authorities?
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that? So, what Councilman Jones is saying, Brenda, the authority has the power to make the decision of the bond. But does the city council have to vote on, on the bond? Because we have to vote on bonds, the sewer authority does?
They have to follow the same process as the water authority or the sewer authority, so...
So, they would be making a recommendation to approve the bond or whatever, and it would come before council for a vote? Particularly since we're the guarantor, sole guarantor of the debt.
Correct. That is my understanding, but I would want to get back to you to verify that.
Okay, you'll get back to us on that. Okay, the other question is what, are there limits or is there a list of eligible projects? So, if a developer wants to request a $5 million bond, can it only be for infrastructure, roads, sewers? Or can it be for anything? Is there limits or?
It can be anything within that.
But you, but you said not residential, or you said they don't recommend residential?
They do, they do not recommend residential because obviously residential is not going to create enough tax dollars listed here that would repay that bond issue.
So, they could though, a developer could apply if they were going to put homes down on the pier, whatever?
Or mixed-use. I mean, oftentimes, I think what's going to end up happening on the waterfront will be mixed-use, and mixed-use is a line item within the legislation currently.
Do the taxes that they're talking about, like it's personal income tax, it's EIT, which is city, it's LST, which is city, sales and use, which is state, those different taxes, does it start during construction phase? So, the construction workers, EIT pay and sales tax pay and this and that, or not the sales tax, but I mean, state income tax, would that go towards this during construction?
That, as we had talked previously, that is one of those nuances that's currently being worked out as the first two municipalities are working through this. So, right now, I do not have a good answer for that because neither do they.
That's a big question because you would generate income tax and stuff like that during construction for any project that would be new because you wouldn't have it otherwise, but wouldn't necessarily be for the life of the project. Okay, let me find out.
Quick question. The new hotel that's being built, you know, the one recently, the addition to the convention center, will that be, was that kind of in limbo or how, is that going to be into the project or not?
What will happen is any work that is started prior to the authorization and the approval of a CRIS designation will go into that baseline that we just talked about. So, none of those dollars will end up going to repay a bond, nor will they be eligible to ask for a bond.
But if they're continuing the project, it'll, it'll count?
If it is something new, then...
Like, if they start the hotel now, let's say?
Right.
If they start the hotel, if they start the hotel this fall and we are designated a CRIS designation January 1st and the hotel is still under construction, the hotel will not be eligible for a CRIS, nor will the taxes generated by that hotel go into what the CRIS authority can pull down to repay a bond.
Any further questions?
Poor Dave.
I tried to squeeze it in.
We're going to go to the right side of the aisle.
Cassidy didn't ask permission, though. I asked permission, Mr. President. Brenna, I had a question. The, I think the goal of this would be to try to bring more, of course, more tax laws into the city. Do the authorities have, the current authorities who own properties within that CRIS district, is it, can they use this tool also, or is it just private developers? Because I think we'd want to have private development, private dollars coming in, not, you know, you're not kind of asking, is it just private developers that'd be available to use this tool? But the authorities could use it also?
Any, anyone can use it.
Because I know the convention center was, is, is planning on selling properties for the GAF, selling that property to private developers, so it's all private money coming in. But yeah, the goal would be to get more tax laws into the city.
That's correct. And any, any development, again, that goes back to what the, the CRIS authority members will look at. If the development, public or private, because there is no designation under the current legislation, is going to generate tax dollars that we listed before, enough to create, enough to, enough to repay that bond, the authority has the ability to approve or disapprove that, regardless of who the developer may be.
Okay, so it's all in the judging process of the authority members to look at the project individually?
Correct.
Okay, I better come up with one question for you anyway. I know these two municipalities that have it already, they have not come into any circumstances where the, their municipalities had to back up any money at this point. I mean, everything has gone status quo to the extent where the authority has covered the money, where the city has not had to put up any money towards this CRIS for the other two municipalities that have it so far.
No, the other two municipalities that have it so far, I don't believe have even gotten to the point in which they can issue a bond. And I think they're, they're starting to find some of the bumps in the road for us, which is actually kind of convenient. And especially as we look to rewrite and reopen the legislation again to smooth some of those bumps out for some of the later ones. So, they are still working through some of those bumps on what counts, what doesn't count, how do I do this? What's the proper paperwork? So, they haven't been to the point of where they're actually issuing a bond at this point.
Okay, and naturally on our end, or by getting through this public hearing, just in case they would move up the date instead of 2016, naturally, the sooner we get authority in place and determine what we are, our application is going to be this time, if it's going to differ from last time or not, I'm not sure. But the sooner we get authority in place, at least we'll be that much more ready if it is pushed forward a little bit, right?
That is correct. That's why we're doing this today, is so that we have the ability to, should they change the legislation in the next couple of weeks, which tends to be the rumor, that we are ready to go.
Which tends to be a rumor. Did everybody hear that? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council.
I usually don't have as many questions, but they just keep coming. Is there, with this CRIS-designated area, are there other incentives or incentive programs allowed to operate in that same space once it's designated for CRIS? For example, if, if on that 130 acres, the current hotel that's being built, that would not count under the CRIS designation or, so you would not receive that benefit, I guess? Is there room for other, LERTA or some kind of other tax incentive, development incentive program to be in that same 130 acres?
There is nothing in the legislation that specifically precludes LERTA. However, in our original application, we had the waterfront, which is currently not a LERTA area. What the legislation does say is that there cannot be any other state programs, and for good reason. You cannot have a KOZ, a KOEZ, a KOIZ, a Neighborhood Improvement Zone, any of those, because all of those other state programs actually abate the taxes that we just listed. So, so at that point, it's, the developer wouldn't be paying anything into doing the bond. So, the legislation is specific to the other state programs. You cannot have both the CRIS designation and a KOZ designation. But as far as LERTA or any other local tax abate... or any other local tax abatement, it's silent.
That would be the Scott project. Yeah, you only get one then.
Yes, you have another question?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Brenda, I think we're kind of, I'm at least thinking about the risks, concerning myself with the risks of this program, but in terms of the rewards or the goals, or what we're hoping to achieve by introducing this program, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
There are definitely risks. I mean, you hope that the CRIS authority is responsible in their numbers and looking at what is a realistic goal for the development of those taxes to repay the bond. As far as the reward goes, you know, it incentivizes developers, obviously, to come in to the city to build above and beyond what they normally would. And when I say that, a lot of what the developers are looking at are the sense of place improvements that they might not do otherwise, which is nicer landscaping, nicer lighting, some extra public parks, things along that line, that typical development would not normally carry, that they would be allowed to carry to make the waterfront area a nicer place to be.
Do you, in your community development experience, do you find that in this 130 acres, this bayfront part, this bayfront area from, I wrote it down, from the shipyard, Don John Shipyard, to Waterworks, right, to the north of all those, that north of the bayfront, right?
Correct.
Is that the area?
Bayfront, north, mhm.
Are we in a, we are in a necessity to incentivize, to encourage development in that area? Yeah, or no?
Well, I think, again, it goes back to, you will have a higher quality development on those very large vacant parcels than you would have if you did not have this tool in place. Anybody, not anybody, but developers can go down there and put up a hotel, but to put up a hotel that may have a floating public dock for concerts, or have extra park space, or things that enhance it for the community, would not normally occur without this additional investment.
Okay. And in terms of like, scope of the project, if a developer like Scott was going to develop the area that he talked about, a CRIS bond would be 5% of his total investment, 100% of his total investment, what are we looking at in terms of scale on how much the CRIS' portion would be of a developer's total investment?
Again, I think every development is going to be different, because it's going to be based more, not upon a percentage of the development as much as what is going to be generated in tax dollars, and what's a responsible estimate of what that generation will be to repay a bond.
And knowing what you know, like, you know their project was, what, 100 million, or what was it going to be, and their request was for what? Because that's what, I mean, if you tell me that their project was 100 million and they wanted 99 from the CRIS, then I'm going to say, Brenda, that doesn't sound like a good idea. So, what was the initial?
Well, again, this isn't validated by any sort of generation of tax dollars, which is, would be the responsibility of the authority. However, the Scots, when looking at it, and we had their proposal put together, they're looking to invest a little over $150 million, and they were hoping to receive about 40 million in CRIS.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
Brenda, just get back to us about that EIT tax and any confusion we may have.
I will.
About, especially with the residency laws, and whether we, you know, if we have contractors down there, can we keep their EIT?
I will do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's quite, I think there's quite a few follow-up questions that we have, that we'll have to get back together, I think.
Brenda, with Scott, if he took the CRIS, he's obviously not interested in the other thing he asked from us, right, the loan, or?
With the loan?
Didn't Scott ask for something else a little while ago?
Oh, he did come in for the RACP, the redevelopment capital program from the state.
I see.
I think you have to put the whole package together. So, you know, if Harrisburg happens to award a $12 million RACP grant for the Scott property, I think that will certainly go into what he may or may not need as far as a CRIS bond.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much for your time, your tenacity, and your knowledge of your subject. Appreciate that so very much. We have the citizens. Okay. That's all the questions we have for you. We'd like to stick around just a little bit. Are there, we'd like to ask any citizens to approach the mic that are in favor of the project? Any citizens would like to speak in favor of the project? Are there any citizens who would like to speak in favor of the project? Hearing none, are there any citizens who'd like to speak against the project? Anyone like to speak against the project?
She wants to speak.
Are there anyone?
She just likes to speak. She speaks a lot.
We just asked all the questions.
You took all the time. You hear me, none? We'll conclude this hearing, oh, I guess, at about 8:30, 8:31-ish. And we'd like to thank you again, Brenda, and I'm sure we'll be giving you a call and bringing us up to date, and a little more in depth, and some questions. But what's the timetable? What are we working on? When do you have to have something in?
There really is no timetable at this point. As I said, we are preparing ourselves for a future application. We don't know when that may or may not be. So, we do have some time to work through some issues, but after holding this public hearing, this was really the, we had to have a 30-day window to do this, so this was the longest portion of it. We can move as fast or as slow as we need to from here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. This concludes the...
Second conclusion.
Second conclusion, yeah, you're right.
I can preach it, you got foreclosures.
Okay. Rose, we shall continue with the agenda.
Okay, that takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Jessica is tired right now, so we'll start over here with Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple of meetings with the, this past week with the Port Authority, there was a board meeting, just a couple of items there to talk about, the dock wall, I don't know if anyone's seen, the dock wall's under repair, it's near the Intermodal Center and next to Don John. The sheik paneling's complete, and that project should be done by the middle of August, so we're all looking forward to get that area cleaned up, and it's doing a great job. Cascade Street pathway, that I'm sure everyone's seen that, it went on the Bayfront Parkway, coming down to Hilton Cascade Street to the Face of Liberty Street there. The work is on schedule. October is the completion date for that project. And also, the city applied for a grant to add some possible safety features to the project, so we're hoping that's going to happen also, to embellish that project and make it even better. We had an Erie Zoo meeting. I attended a meeting of the board this past week. Several items report here. They just had their Gallup Azusa fundraising event. Again, it was a sellout event. I attended, and I want to congratulate the zoo for putting on a great event, and hopefully they raise some legitimate money for, to keep up for this next year. Couple upcoming events at the zoo, the Frozen Safari's coming up on January, or July 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00, and then also Senior Citizens Days, Wednesday, July 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00. This past week, several council members, myself and others, attended the, others from the city, attended the Pennsylvania Municipal League in Philadelphia as a convention. There is some great programs that were offered during this event. There was legislative updates and several bills and initiatives going around in the state. There's a program on advocacy, and how to focus on communication with legislators, it was a good program I attended. The program I really enjoyed was the program on trying to create more walkable cities. It included ways to make safer intersections, safer downtowns, looked at ways to make pedestrians and bike lanes a lot easier, and tried to do it with not really spending a lot of money. So, there's a lot of interesting ideas there that I really continue to look forward to. And even the speaker to that event was a great speaker, I might even try to see if he could come to Erie sometime to talk to us. There was a breakout session for council members from around the state, and there was a lot of good ideas shared at that meeting. A lot of the same, a lot of the other cities and city councils have the same problems that we're looking at, and a lot of the similar initiatives. There's a lot of best practices talked about and different solutions. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Wynarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, once again, everyone. Few topics I have to talk about tonight. One, a liaison to the Housing Authority, I did talk to Mr. Haran today. I missed the meeting on Monday due to a schedule conflict, but just to let the public know, the Section 8 housing is officially going to go into effect where they will not renew their programs of Section 8 housing if there's any monies owed on taxes or any fees. As of July 1st, which this was brought up by the board and got the legal opinion through Mr. Attorney Senate, that, to make sure the legalities of it, and in order to get your Section 8 housing, which it's, what Section 8 housing, it helps you get government money to rent these properties, and in doing so, roughly, we had $55,000 in garbage delinquents at the beginning of the year. By bringing this up to these landlords that understand, if they're going to get that same Section 8 housing, they would have to have their taxes and fees paid up. Starting July 1st, if these are not paid up, they are not going to get that benefit, and unfortunately, they're going to have to look for other incomes to get this paid to them. By them losing the Section 8, it's going to come to the city then, and they're not going to get their rental licenses because they are late on fees. But unless they have some type of payment plan, or they are paid up, that is not going to be in effect anymore for the Housing Authority and Section 8, which I do credit Mr. Haran and the board for showing some initiative to help the city in this, because although it's only part of the chunk, 55,000 of over 2 million, it is, it helps. Every little bit helps, and $55,000 in a little bit. What else? Did go to the Transit Authority meeting this past Monday. I have invited Executive Director Mike Tan to join us at caucus this coming Wednesday, first Wednesday of July, just to give us an update on the progress of the facility over there on 14th Street. They do, I believe it's every week, they've been doing aerial images of just the progress that is going on. He's going to bring a file to just show us where they're at with it, what their expectations still are, when Phase 2 is going to come into play, and, but just to update a council on the whole, instead of, like to be the transparency, and I appreciate Mr. Tan doing that for us, we look forward to seeing him this coming Wednesday. Did talk to Doug Mitchell today. I know there's that issue over there on East 32nd, but West 32nd, they made that little bit of a priority to get West 32nd paved from Green Garden to Pittsburgh Ave, due to the fact that West 38th, come July 7th, they're going to have that closed for the I-79 bridge over there. Instead of having two major arteries on the west side closed at one time due to road construction or bridge construction, they made West 32nd a priority, just to alleviate some of the congestion for the citizens, so to name the supervisors to expedite that. We appreciate it, as I do work on the west side, but people got to understand, that's our city crews doing that paving job over there, that is not contracted out. So, keep up the good work on that. Naturally, we all met with the police chief, it's probably been actually a couple of weeks ago now. They're again, just trying to keep an open relationship with council, just with the issues that are going on in the city, whether it's gun violence, or burglaries, or any other crimes. Although we've had our share of gun violence, compared to this time last year, we've confiscated over 44 more guns than this time last year, which has, it's a positive that we've done that, it's a negative that there were that many more illegal guns out there. But we appreciate the chief keeping the open office with us as council. Rose, once again, congratulations. We look forward to our continued working relationship. And other than that, my daughter Marie Wynarski will be 17 tomorrow. I just want to wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
Couple hundred dollars would make her a lot happier.
Yeah.
Hope she heard that. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of the items that previous council members have mentioned, I wanted to mention, so I will kind of expeditiously move through those. For example, the meeting with the chief, and again, it's always good to have an open door, but it's also good to have an open door so that we know what, and how to answer questions that citizens are asking us. We spend a lot of money on public safety, in particular policing, and the, you know, there are other ways to spend money, but right now, with all of the challenges that we're having in the area of crime, in particular, very aggressive crime, gun violence, et cetera, a lot of that money is being focused in that area. But with that said, it's important that we are able to give the citizens an answer for how that money is being spent in a return on that investment. And Mr. Wynarski mentioned about the number of handguns that have been retrieved off of the street, illegal handguns, double what this time last year, which is a bad thing, but good at the same time. And so, it's kind of a two-edged sword. And so, you know, we want to continue to bring reports back, and not to steal the thunder of other people, but it's important that we do, as a team, talk about what we know as far as what the city is doing, what departments are doing, because the citizens don't have the privilege of knowing as much as we do, coming in here and getting reports and getting memos, but they do have a right, and we have a responsibility to let them know as much as we can as far as where those tax dollars are going. Also, it was one of the council members who did attend the Pennsylvania Municipal League meeting, as Mr. Brennan mentioned, a lot of great opportunities to learn and network and share best practices and share some of the good things we're doing here, but also to receive some good information from other municipality leaders around the state. It was a great experience, and I have to give a quick shout-out to Councilman Curtis Jones Jr. in Philadelphia. There's a city councilman with the exact same name as mine in Philadelphia, and I was able to sit in a Philadelphia City Council meeting during our session that week, and it's a whole other world. We have no idea, it's just unbelievable. But it was a great experience, great exposure, and actually, about four or five of their 17 council members are planning to make a trip to the city of Erie to see how beautiful our lakeshore and our Presque Isle, and all the beautiful amenities that we offer in this part of the state. Many of them have never been here, and so, at least four are going to be coming up before the end of the summer, so we'll be talking to the office, and we'll probably figure out how we can make this a great experience, including their council president. CRIS designation, obviously, we did have the public hearing in relation to starting the, or implementing a board, CRIS authority, excuse me. Still a lot of questions, still a major process to go through, but I think it'll be worth the work if we get through, get through the process and get kind of a fair and even and representative team to be a part of that authority. I think, because, I think the mayor's office administration, as well as council, definitely should have input on who would serve in those capacities, as the capacity of authority members on that authority. And, you know, so again, there's a lot of nuances, but it's great to have someone like Brenda Sandberg, who's so informed, been involved in this process, you know, for quite a while, so that's a great asset we have in her. Also, I got an email, probably many of us got an email concerning some citizens' concerns of business, having some inappropriate... of business, having some inappropriate, I don't know if it's inappropriate, but some concerns about garbage containers being placed in residential area for a business. And the called, police department called zoning. And so, I don't know if the administration's heard anything about that. I'll forward you the email, and maybe you could kind of help facilitate something for those particular citizens. I've gotten multiple calls and multiple emails as well on East 17th Street. And so, before we leave tonight, I'll get that information to you. Finally, I did want to make comment during the meeting, previously in the meeting about Rose and her diligence so far and then her, you know, congratulating her, wanted to give her her time, but I want to take a portion of my committee report to thank Jim Clem, specifically in his own time, to be able to say, you know, we've never done, none of us, Mel's been on council for, this is his second time around, none of us, we haven't had a new city clerk in 40-plus years. And so, this is a great, this is actually historic, I think, in our community. So, Rose, you're a part of history. We're all a part of history in that sense. And so, Jim Clem, thank you very much. Not only does he do what he's done here, but he's been an advocate and a blessing and a positive resource to kids in this community for a long time. He's been reffing games and being in the community and being a great guy. So, Mr. Clem, we appreciate that and all you've done and what you'll probably continue to do, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Jones. Councilman Kowalski.
Yes, quick one. The pension plan met while I was on the road, but I kept in contact with them by telephone. And we will have a little adjustment in the pension ordinance that'll come before council, and I'll make sure you all get a copy of it, and you can ask me about an explanation of it. It's actually to the betterment of the fund, and that's always a good thing, and it's been checked over by our attorney. I also attended the Philadelphia Conference my 13th, and it was one of the better ones. And it's nice to see, I've been in all types of towns, and this was the biggest city in Pennsylvania, and the problems never changed from the littlest to the biggest. But it was a great conference. We'll be in Allentown next year. And speaking of that, I stuck around as my son lives in that area, and I toured their Chris project and trying to get some information on the project that's going to take place in Bethlehem. Their project, of course, is a little different than ours, and the state's not going to be as generous as they were with Allentown with us. But next, my next trip to Allentown, I'm going to take a tour with their mayor and just see a little bit of the insides and outsides of the project. I'm going to ask him some very in-depth questions, how it seems to work out for him, and hopefully I can report back to council. Because a lot of the questions we have are relevant about, you know, who's on the board, which taxes are affected, what's our liability. I mean, while I'm a great proponent of the Chris, and I have been from day one, my vote's going to be predicated on what's best for the city and what's best for us. Because at the end of the day, it's we on council that have to decide whether, you know, to what degree of liability we take on this. And it could be a great step forward, but we have to be very careful. And I want to thank code enforcement. While I was on the road, got numerous complaints from citizens ranging from grass to street repairs. So between code and streets department, I want to thank them for speedy reaction to the problems. And Rose, welcome again once aboard. And as the, probably, I call myself the historian of council. I'm probably the only one who remembers Jimmy's predecessor, besides Jimmy himself. So, Rose, you're the third one, and you know what they say, three's the charm, so.
Thank you, Councilman Kowalski. Councilwoman Jessica Haran.
Thank you, sir.
Koonso.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be brief for a change.
Oh, geez.
I'll try. Okay. The Erie Area Cog met last week. We were discussing in depth the E-Government Committee projects, the project of the cog, which's goal is to help municipalities to be able to get electronic, more on the electronic age, where they're either using SharePoint sites or helping them with document management or helping them with storage of documents, things like that. So, they continue to advance and to look for areas they can help. Besides just the member governments all throughout Erie County and different authorities as well have been utilizing those services of the cog. So that continues to advance. The cog also had some discussion about the cable franchise agreement, which we had negotiated together, and that was adopted last year. I don't know if, I don't, I assume it's public knowledge, but Time Warner Cable has been bought out. So our franchise agreement, which was negotiated with Time Warner Cable last year through the cog and is now in place, does have a provision that the franchise agreement would transfer to the new cable provider. The cable provider, from what I understand, Time Warner was bought out by Comcast, but the cable provider for the city of Erie will be Charter because Comcast, I guess, was too big to have that much customers or whatever, so they have to spin off part of their area to Charter. So at some point, and I don't know how fast this happens, but the city cable provider will be Charter and the, the whole, I think the whole Erie County will be Charter. And this cable franchise agreement where, in which the city and the municipal, the other host municipalities receive some payment for the use of the cable lines, because this is the use of the city's, the public's right away. So the cable company is obligated to give us a franchise fee. As a result, it's in the contract. So our hope is that the transfer provision, which is in the existing franchise agreement, which was just ratified, will smoothly transfer to the new cable company, but we'll see the hope. Just wanted to mention, the next Wednesday, we have our council meeting, and we have finance committee immediately following. We'll continue on our plans and make more progress on the delinquent, garbage delinquencies, and also start some more conversations about the tax lien, potential tax lien sale and the sewer authority agreements that we talked, that would be something would be on our radar screen this year. Also, I just wanted to mention, the Summer Rec program is going on. I know that lots of citizens of Erie participate, and in my opinion, not enough. So just want to encourage everybody to come out to do some of these great things. I know Jill has a big hand in the summer concert series that they have at the senior citizens apartment buildings. I know they had one at Mercy Terrace. It got rained out last year, but so it was good this year, didn't get rained out. And so, we appreciate people coming out and enjoying these events that we have. They also have a lot of youth programs, from the swimming to the tennis to playgrounds to basketball, a lot of fun stuff for youth. And I know from personal experience that the swim programs at, they're at Central High, Strong Vincent, and East High are great, great opportunities for kids to learn to swim for free in the city of Erie, being a city on a lake with bay, with the bay and with creeks and everything else, kids need to know how to swim. I know from firsthand experience, there are not enough kids in the pool. So please, the next set of swimming lessons, they're two weeks long, they're Monday, Wednesday, Friday for two weeks, and then they set up again. You can sign up again. So you haven't missed if you haven't gone. The next set of swim lessons starts next Monday, and you can sign up, you can call the, you have to call the downtown Y and just say you want to sign up for that City Learn to Swim program and get your kids signed up. The kids get really great instruction, and we want to have that pool full. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to let council know that when you tell me the, you're going to be brief and short, it scares me. So, Rose, you may have to turn on a five-minute notice to us, but we'll discuss that. And that does not need a resolution, nor do I need four votes. It's called the power of the chair. Just a brief report.
Wait, time's up.
Congratulations and kudos go out to our Erie Police Department for what they're doing, not only the guns that are taken out the street, but the speedy arrests that they are making that tells me that they are working very hard and diligently. They're putting in the necessary overtime to make these streets as safe as possible. And on the same time, I say to all of them, protect yourself, your partner, because you need to go home to your families as well. But you're doing an outstanding job, and I thank you very much. Next, I'd like to say, give kudos to the administration. I'm the liaison as president to just about every committee, at least inside this building, and I try my best not to bother you. I don't like going in, because I don't like folks from Harrisburg coming in and bugging me. So I don't, I don't do that. But if I need something, your phone call away, but continue to do what you're doing. The next thing, I didn't get any heat, but I was in some meetings with discussion about the monies that we have for the police department, the grants that we received. And we need to understand, regardless of how much money came in for grants, you must use those dollars specifically for the grants. That's why you got the money. You cannot take money from a designated grant to do anything else with it. I don't care what the problem is. You cannot do it, and we will not do it. I will not support that. So the mayor has gotten some heat because he didn't participate in the JAWS program. He cannot take money from there. He cannot do that. So we need to understand that. And we'll make it work some way, somehow. But don't put that undue pressure on administration, and don't put it on council, because we get the calls. Why can't you make the mayor do that? We can't make the mayor do that. It's illegal. That means they'll take the money that's left, and we'll have to pay back the money that we spent. It's for crime and prevention, and that's what they're doing, and they do a good job. Jessica mentioned the Summer Rec program. The city is a major supporter, major sponsor of our basketball league, which has been going on for 24 years. I considered a city rec program, basically because they put a lot of dollars into it. But also, there are many sponsors that pick up where the city left off. For 24 years, we've been doing this. And this year, the police department has thrown, jumped in, and they're going to provide some security this summer up at the basketball courts. The state police is part of it. They're going to provide security. The sheriff's department is participating. The DA department is participating. So we're going to have a real good time and a safe time this summer. We haven't had any major problems in 24 years. But it would be reluctant on my part, seeing what's going on in the community, in our city, with drive-bys and shootings. Shootings used to happen three in the morning after someone's drunk. Now it's two and three in the afternoon. So my job is to protect these kids as best as I can, and that's what we're doing there. And I thank all the law enforcement officers for jumping in, pitching in. And we will have some surveillance cameras mounted as well. Penilec is putting additional lighting up at no cost to us as in kind, and I could thank them for that. So we're doing one heck of a job with the volunteers that we have. 10 to 12-year-old, we budgeted for 80 in each age group, 10 to 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. We budget 80 per. We had 102 10 to 12 registered. And anyone know me, I didn't turn any of them down, so we, we got all of them on the 10 to 12. It's going to cost a little more time, but we'll do it. 13 to 14, we have 92 that registered. And 15 to 16, we had 56 registered. And we cut off registration while they still go online and they still registering. I got to say no at some point. I'm not sure what point I'll say, probably in the winter. But it's working. It's working. We have them for three to five hours, that they're not getting in any trouble. That's important to us, and it's part of the city. And we have an educational component, a counseling component. Our motto is no workshop, no jump shot, which means if you do not attend the workshop before your game, you don't shoot a jump shot that game. Couple of kids tried us a few years ago, and they set out three or four games. And then they said, Mr. Spooner, I'm sorry, can I play? I said, no, I'm going to move you up into the front office. So they began to keep scoring and get $5 a game. I think they liked that better anyway. So basically, that's what we're doing to help the city out in decreasing the crimes as best we can. And we have a lot of parent involvement this year, more than we ever had. We had a parent workshop, we had a coaches workshop, parenting with integrity at a basketball game, coaching with integrity at a basketball game. That's so important. And we will fill these seats up sometime during the next two months with all the kids and parents and coaches, so you can see what we have done. I guess that's the end of my five minutes.
You have a five after the five?
I've been hanging around Councilman Jones too long. Okay, I don't have anything else. Controller.
I do not have anything.
Ah. Start the sweep. Administration.
I promised to be brief. Rose, congratulations, Rose. The administration's very happy that you've been selected for this position. Disappointed to lose Mr. Clem, as I know that we all are. The institutional knowledge that he's taking with him is hopefully only a phone call away. We'll all be calling Jim, right? So congratulations, and it's going to be great working with you for the next at least three years, right? I have a couple of, I have an email into Public Works already regarding the sinkhole on 32nd and Reed. You may have seen me texting over here. So I've got that into Doug Mitchell. I will chat with Curtis about the 17th Street refuse program, or refuse problem. Sands of Summer is going great. Again, thank the banking partners, and I encourage everyone to come out. This coming Monday, June 30th, we'll be at Soldiers and Sailors Home. Mercy Center for Women, Mercy Terrace, excuse me, finally got a concert. They were rained out last year. St. Joseph's Apartments were a great kickoff. And St. James Manor, I was unable to make it this Monday, but I think they had a nice turnout as well. So a lot of great more concerts coming up, serving the senior citizens and the residents in all of our neighborhoods. So we hope to see some of your smiling faces there. Thanks.
Rose, you all report?
No report tonight. City Council adjourns at 8:00, 9:04. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Saran Koonso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky.
I thought you were giving it to me.
No.